Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for rising. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, Mrs. Issing.
Here.
Mr. Kachasik.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
Here.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Noel.
Here.
Mr. Neimich.
Here.
Mr. Petrucci.
Here.
Mr. Stovar.
Here.
Dr. Trey.
Here.
You have a call, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. We continue on with communications. Mr. Loark. We have none this evening, Mr. President. I've missed a point at this particular time. It relates to acting as a temporary chairperson in our reorganization meeting for this evening, and I understand I'll just continue in that capacity. And we'll go through the next so many, half a dozen sentences, and I'll be on my way into oblivion. So now we'll step into communications, Mr. Loark. Now we have communications. Okay. All right. I have certificates of election that were received from the Westmoreland County Courthouse. I'll read them. Commonwealth Pennsylvania County, Westmoreland Certificate of Election. We, the undersigned members of the County Board of Elections of said county hereby certify that after tabulating the votes casted in municipal election held on the 5th day of November 2013 in said county appears that Tony M. Issing was duly elected to the office of school director for your term for Pentraff Region 3 in the county F4 said. And is signed by County Commissioners Anderson, Copus, and Tyler Courtney. His name's screwed here, I can't see. And it's certified by Director James Montini. Mrs. Issing, I have, we'll do those votes later. Okay. Commonwealth Pennsylvania County, Westmoreland Certificate of Election. We, the undersigned members of the County Board of Elections of said county hereby certify that after tabulating the votes casted in municipal election held on the 5th day of November 2013 in said county appears that Richard Neimich was duly elected to the office of school director for a term of four years for Pentraff Region 2 in County F4 said. And it is signed by Commissioners Anderson, Courtney, and Copus, and it's tested to by Director James Montini. Commonwealth Pennsylvania County, Westmoreland Certificate of Election. We, the undersigned members of the County Board of Elections of said county hereby certify that after tabulating the votes casted in municipal election held on the 5th day of November 2013 in said county appears that Martin Stovar was duly elected to the office of school director for a term of four years for Pentraff Region 1 in County F4 said. Signed by Charles Anderson, Ted Copus, and Tyler Courtney. Certified by James Montini. Commonwealth Pennsylvania County, Westmoreland Certificate of Election. We, the undersigned members of the County Board of Elections of said county hereby certify that after tabulating the votes casted in municipal election held on the 5th day of November 2013 in said county appears that Patrick J. Trey was duly elected to the office of school director for a term of four years for Pentraff Region 2 in the county F4 said. Signed by Charles Anderson, Tyler Courtney, and Ted Copus. Tested to by James Montini. Okay. So at this point, if you four can rise and be sworn. Okay. Please repeat after me. Aye, please state your name.
I am Patrick J. Trey.
Do solemnly swear firm that I will support, obey, defend the Constitution of the United States.
Will support and obey the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution is Commonwealth.
Constitution is Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge my duties of my office with fidelity.
Discharge my duties of my office with fidelity.
Okay. We're sworn. Let's see if I can just get you to sign these. Now, you, Dr. Trey. Okay. Thank you. And again, the newly directed, the newly elected directors are Martin Stovar, Richard Neimich, Patrick J. Trey, and Tony M. Issing. And that is all the correspondence we have this evening, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. And I'll step back into the temporary chairman person position, and we'll go with the election of officers. The chair will now accept nominations for the office of president.
I've nominated Tony Issing for the office of president of Pentraff.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? May I have a motion to close the nominations?
Second.
So moved and seconded for the nominations to be closed for the office of president. If there are no objections, the chair will conduct a voice vote. All in favor of Tony Issing for president, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no?
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Tony Issing. You are now the president. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. If I can do half as well as he did, I'll be going okay. Okay. The chair will now accept nominations for the office of vice president.
I've nominated Rich Neimich for vice president.
Rich Neimich has been nominated by Mr. Petrucci for the office of vice president. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? May I have a motion to close the nominations?
Make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made to close the nominations for the office of vice president. If there are no objections, the chair will conduct a voice vote. All in favor of Mr. Neimich, Mr. Richard Neimich, for vice president? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Rich Neimich has been duly elected vice president for 2014.
Congratulations, Mr. Neimich.
Congratulations. Okay, congratulations. All right. May I have a motion to establish the date, time, and place for regular monthly board and superintendent's information committee meetings for 2014?
So moved.
Okay, so establish.
Second.
Okay.
Second by Mr. Noel.
Motion by.
Motion by, was by.
Neimich.
Petrucci.
Okay. Okay, so the motion has been made to establish the date, time, and place for the regular monthly board and superintendent's information committee meetings for 2014. All meetings will be held in the Pentraff High School library at 7:00 P.M. Can I read these or just?
As listed.
As listed.
They'll be published.
All right. Questions being called for? This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried. May I have a motion to authorize the secretary of the board of school directors, Brett Lego, to use the facsimile signature of Tony Issing, newly elected president of the board of school directors, and to further authorize the secretary to file the required documents with the Department of Education?
Motion. That is.
Motion by Mr. Leonard, seconded by Mr. Koschko. Dr. Koschko.
Question.
Question being called for? Sorry.
Okay.
Of course I have it.
All right. All right. A motion has been made. We'll get through this first meeting.
That does happen.
A motion has been made to authorize the secretary of the board of directors, Brett Lego, to use the facsimile of Tony Issing, newly elected president of the board of school directors, to further authorize the secretary to file the required documents with the Department of Education. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All against, all opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay. Who's the alternate? Legislature council representative?
Alternate for legislative council?
Do we have an alternate for legislative council?
We don't have an alternate.
Okay. All right. May I have a motion to appoint J. Trey as the district's legislative council representative?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Question being called for? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried. May I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Petrucci.
Second.
Second by Mr. Noel.
Organization meeting has been adjourned at 7:23 P.M. All right. Right now we're having our regular meeting. Call the order for our regular meeting. Can we do the roll call again?
Yes. Okay, Mrs. Issing.
Here.
Mr. Kachasik.
Here.
Dr. Koschko. Dr. Koschko left.
Here.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Noel.
Here.
Mr. Neimich.
Here.
Mr. Petrucci.
Here.
Mr. Stovar.
Here.
Dr. Trey.
Here.
You have a call, Mrs. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lego. Okay. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of November 11th?
So moved.
Move. Motion by Mr. Petrucci.
Second.
Second by Mr. Noel.
Question.
Questions being called for? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Motion carried. On the information section, Dr. Harris.
So I was gonna start off, but I do not actually see him here tonight, our student union representative. Is he here? Lucas? Okay. And we will start off with our student of the month. This is actually one of our favorite times of the year. And the very first one, we had Dan Denapay from Trafford Elementary.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Gives me great pleasure to have Logan Brinko, fifth grade student, represent Trafford Elementary as Pentraff Elementary Student of the Month. Logan's parents, Tanya and Mike, as well as his sister Carly, who is in second grade at Trafford Elementary, are here with us as well, right over here in the back. Logan also has a brother Tyler, who is in eighth grade down at Trafford. He's at home tonight doing some homework. When it was time to determine Trafford Elementary Student of the Month, the staff and I didn't need to look too hard. We knew Logan was our man. Logan's current teacher, Mrs. Schaefer, states Logan is a kind, hard-working student. He tries hard and doesn't give up. He helps others without being asked and always offers a helping hand. Logan is a pleasure to have in class. Mr. Boudosch, Logan's third grade teacher, quickly stated, Logan was in my third grade class two years ago. He made an immediate impression as a student that I would be able to rely on to help in the classroom. Two years later, he is still my go-to guy. When the intercom is done, he is the first fifth grader I know I can count on to assist with dismissal. Wants to get those kids out of school. He was also a leader in the classroom. The other kids looked up to him. Nicest thing about him, that he treated everyone fairly. He would call on a less popular boy that kept to himself to read the next question as often as he would call on anyone else. Mr. Boudosch continued to state Logan is a well-deserved recipient of this honor. He represents Trafford well. And that right there is some good stuff. I've been talking to some other teachers in the building, as well as students. You know, Logan is the guy who everyone looks up to. You know, cafeteria, he's just that kind of kid. He's an all-around good kid. You know, you're sitting there trying to think of words to how to describe him, but just deep down, it's something I'd say is the number-one thing that if a person could have, is what Logan has and how he treats other kids. Keep going. Logan is well-rounded. He enjoys sports, especially soccer. He loves playing kick the bucket with the kids in the neighborhood. When he gets a chance, he likes to go hunt. He likes to go snow skiing, and he enjoys riding the waves when they go to Ocean City, Maryland on vacation. During the summer, if you're looking for Logan, you most likely find him swimming in his pool in the backyard. Logan tells me he is excited about the holidays. He enjoys being with his family and getting to visit his memes and paps. That would be both sets of grandparents, spending time with them. Correct?
Good.
On behalf of Pentraff School District, we would like to wish Logan and his family a happy and safe holiday season. And congratulate Logan on being the elementary student of the month.
That's step out here a little further. Madam President, let me do this a couple more times. For you, Logan Logan, he's the man. If he can't do it, no one can. You have Logan?
Yes.
Well, it seems like it. You've got a lot of talents, a lot of skills. You're a friendly-looking guy. You seem to be confident and certainly well-appreciated and respected by your teachers and the people, the students around you, your classmates. And on behalf of all of us, we wish you the very best and hope evolving as a man you appear to be today.
Thank you.
Take care. Thank you.
Thanks from Trafford Middle. We have brought this all.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. I'd like to introduce Antonio DeMarcus, a seventh grader at Trafford Middle School. Joining him today is his mother, his father, his grandparents, and his two brothers, Johnny and Dominic, who are in the fourth and fifth grade at Level Green. They're here as well. They're not doing that all the way. Listen to these grades. In science, 98 percent. Social studies, 100 percent. Algebra, 104 percent. Advanced literature, 99 percent. Phys ed, 100 percent. And computers, 97 percent. And that's just this quarter. First quarter was very similar. As you can see, Antonio is an excellent student. His favorite subject, though, is algebra. Maybe that's why Antonio has already considered becoming a mathematician, or computer engineer, or a physical scientist. He's already thinking about that. Obviously, in addition to that, he has perfect attendance. When Antonio is not studying, he enjoys being with friends. He plays deck hockey year-round and in-house basketball. He is also a member of the St. Barbara Bears Youth Ministry. Here are a few comments from his teachers. Antonio is a great team member in all of his activities. All of his work goes above and beyond what is expected. Another teacher said, where to begin? He is an exceptional student. He always puts forth his best effort with all of his work. He writes exceptionally well using vocabulary words that most seventh graders don't know, let alone use. Antonio is a diligent worker, a kind person, and a very strong example of what a student should do to be outstanding. Antonio has taught himself some sign language so that he can communicate better with a peer that has a hearing disability and works with that student regularly. That's the kind of person and student Antonio is. He even took the time, when I talked with him, and he did a little write-up for me, to mention that he enjoys Trafford Middle School and that he believes the faculty at Trafford cares about his education. Well, Antonio, we care about you, and we're very proud of you, and thanks for making Trafford Middle School very special. Congratulations.
Antonio writes a book like, what's this guy? I can see it all the way over. He pulled it all the way from the middle. Now, try not to embarrass you. I've embarrassed a lot of people, but I'm all right. Obviously, Antonio, you're a solid guy. I mean, you're smart, you're caring, and again, you have the respect of all those around you. It's a good quality to keep in your life. And, you know, you also have confidence that didn't show. Your face sometimes shows you a little nervous about being where you are. But when he was saying, yeah, he's a really good student. Yeah, that's a good student. Other people, I'm just teasing you a little bit, but you do a great job. Continue the honor of life. Wish you the very best.
Thank you.
Finally, at the high school, we have assistant vice principal, grade captain, Jamie.
Tommy Lewis. It is a pleasure to announce Tommy Lewis as the high school student of the month. Along with Tommy, today, her mother came, Mrs. Lewis, brother Harry, and Zachary Hartz. About Tommy a little bit. Currently, the first quartile, she received a 3.62 GPA, and throughout her years at the VOTEC, she has straight A's. Congratulations. It's very impressive, she is in cosmetology. Few things about her teachers, what they said about her. Tommy is compassionate and creative. She approaches all projects and assignments with a creative angle. She looks for the road less traveled and takes it. Our world today is filled with average individuals that are willing to take risks, be different, and put others first. Tommy Lewis is not average. She's a great student because she is a dynamic person, respectful, considerate, and gets along well with others. Mrs. Koontz, she's had you three times. She has a lot to say about you. She said you were very easy to talk with about a variety of subjects. You take pride in your work, not only here at the high school, but also at VOTEC. And she can't say enough good things about you, Tommy, and if she could adopt you, she Also, Mr. Davis stated that you are a tremendous ambassador to PT. He's in the cafeteria with you, doing duties. So he has watched you numerous times sit with students that are sitting by themselves, and you're willing to sit with them and talk with them for weeks at end to make sure they feel comfortable and have a familiar face to eat with every day. And finally, one of the most important areas of your academic is the VOTEC. Your teacher there said you are an exemplary student in the cosmetology class. Tommy is in Skills USA, and you are the president. You are a leader, competitive, and a very hard worker. You often volunteer for extra jobs around the class and for clinical customers on Friday afternoons. You have won the Cosmetology Student of the Month in April 2013, and you have been in the Douglas Education Men's Hair Cutting Competition, and you participated in the aesthetics competition as a model. After you graduate, you plan to attend the cosmetology education at the Douglas Educational Center following graduation and focusing on special effects makeup programs. Congratulations, Tommy. Good luck to you and your family, especially after high school.
Thank you. Well, you obviously have done a great job down at VOTEC and at PT. It sounds like you have a great future ahead of you. And, um, do you do much bald men? I make two hairs. We have a shortage of hair and men in our family. They either go gray or they go bald. And no one should tell my husband I said that. Anyway, I'm sure you have a bright career ahead of you. Good luck to you. Thank you.
It would take a moment to have the press tour in front of us with our students of the month. If you can come over to this area, please.
That's small for a.
Yeah, right, exactly. It's a campus, right? It's everything to hear. Right, right. Couldn't wait to get out of here.
Okay.
Can't go into it unless you're gonna accept it or accept them. So that's his choice. We have to get there if that's the place.
Karen, you're more than welcome to stay for the next hour and a half meeting, or you could actually leave. I don't think we have many stays. We're not intended by any.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Well, it's a sixty-two thousand. Thirty-one thousand.
Well, it also tells you, you know, one more visit.
It's the same, just take everything over twenty-five. Stick to, it also looks like, like the most picturesque campus.
Yeah, it's small.
Yeah. No, maybe Syracuse. I haven't seen that one.
It is, it's interesting.
Picturesque, like, whole road.
But again, if you were us, you're very, most of the kids would come.
This is dominant.
Congratulations.
Next, we're lucky.
Antonio's gonna do a presentation about some new changes that's gonna take place next year at the high school.
Yeah, I'll make this real quick. In front of you, you should have a front and a back to it. The front side, the Summer Academy, it's something that I've been thinking about here for a while, that's giving us more students opportunities, not only here at Pentraff, but possibly from students from other different schools. This academy is something, if you look on the right-hand side, we're offering some different classes here over the summer. Some are just for Pentraff students, such as eleventh-grade health. We ran that last summer. It was a blended school approach. Also, if you look, the World Literature and Sociology will be additions. That's through La Roche and Mount Elwishes. In the past, we've always had driver's ed theory. It's always been in class. I think we've missed a lot of students because of that, because it's three weeks in a row straight. Now, we're looking at a blended approach, with some online, some face-to-face interaction, and it will be a thirty-hour course, and that should be finally completed in the next couple of weeks. So we got the okay from PD to go through with that. With the driver's ed theory, we were considering not only opening it up, obviously, to Pentraff students, but also to any student in the area that would like to take it. We get numerous calls for driver's ed, but we always turn them down, and we looked at, maybe this can be self-sustaining from all the students that are interested. Obviously, there's a cutoff point, but we'd like to make these programs self-sustaining and pay for themselves. As you can see on the left-hand side, there's a breakdown on what the Summer Academy consists of, face-to-face interaction as well as a blended approach. The first two classes, World Literature and Sociology, they can receive credit. That's an eight-week program, and obviously, they have to pay for that as well. The driver's ed theory, a thirty-hour program, and it's a certification course. Obviously, you can get a reduced cost of your insurance. And for the health, we ran that last year, seventy-five students took that in total, and we will be offering it about eight to nine weeks this summer as well. If you look across the bottom there, there are some.
Karen, you're more than welcome to stay for the next hour and a half meeting, or you could actually leave. I don't think we have many stays. We're not intended by any of these.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Congratulations.
Next, we're lucky. Great. Antonio's gonna do a presentation about some new changes that's gonna take place next year at the high school.
Yeah, I'll make this real quick. In front of you, you should have a front and a back to it. The front side, the summer academy, it's something that I've been thinking about here for a while. That's giving us more students opportunities, not only here at Penn Trafford, but possibly from students from other different schools. This academy is something, if you look on the right-hand side, we're offering some different classes here over the summer. Some are just for Penn Trafford students, such as 11th Grade Health. We ran that last summer. It was a blended school approach. Also, if you look, the World Literature and Sociology will be additions. That's through La Roche and Mount Elwishes. In the past, we've always had driver's ed theory. It's always been in class. I think we've missed a lot of students because of that, because it's three weeks in a row straight. Now we're looking at a blended approach where some online, some face-to-face interaction, and it will be a 30-hour course, and that should be finally completed in the next couple of weeks. So, we got the okay from PD to go through with that. With the driver's ed theory, we were considering not only opening it up, obviously, to Penn Trafford students, but also to any student in the area that would like to take it. We get numerous calls for driver's ed, but we always turn them down, and we looked at maybe this can be self-sustaining from all the students that are interested. Obviously, there's a cutoff point, but we'd like to make these programs self-sustaining and pay for themselves. As you can see on the left-hand side, there's a breakdown on what the summer academy consists of: face-to-face interaction as well as a blended approach. The two, the first two classes, World Literature and Sociology, they can receive credit. That's an eight-week program, and obviously they have to pay for that as well. The driver's ed theory, a 30-hour program, and it's a certification course. Obviously, you can get a reduced cost of your insurance. And for the health, we ran that last year. Seventy-five students took that total, and we will be offering it about eight to nine weeks this summer as well. If you look across the bottom there, there are some specifics to the summer academy. The initial opportunity, the courses are only offered to PT students. They have first dibs on the classes. All students must have a 3.0 and completed the 10th grade. More information will come out later. I don't have the specifics of how much it will cost. We're still talking about that. I know I need to work with Brett a little bit without, but like I said in the past, the goal is to make this self-sustaining and no cost.
Can you just do one class?
Excuse me?
One class for offering?
Well, students, they can take multiples.
I'm just saying, just when it fills up, you're just gonna do one class?
We're not sure. We're not, we're, when you say one class, an online class, obviously, is a lot different where you can get a lot more students than 30. That's something we need to speak about. We haven't set the parameters on that yet. But I can tell you for the health last year that the cutoff was 25. So, it wasn't a cutoff. Are there any questions about this? I know this is short, but there'll be more specifics coming out.
Both sides of this, as you said, students have to complete a 10th grade or just be in 10th grade and be on?
They have to be complete, they have to complete 10th grade.
Alright, so this is juniors and seniors, both sides of this?
Well, if you flip onto the other side, this is what we offer this year. Total number of students that have taken the one woman classes this year that are currently registered. We have 565 courses registered. Obviously, a lot of students took more than one class. If you look at the bottom there, you can see what it costs for a class here for a student to take: $200. And you can see what it costs on the right-hand side, or even at the bottom there, Clarion in California, Indiana, what it costs for a three-credit class. That's with your tuition, your books, your room and board, everything. So, you can see what a great deal this is for the kids. 565, that's a lot of students, and you can see there's 22 courses, and the students are actually taking advantage of this, which I'm pleased.
Craig, last year, you did a cost savings for one year. What was the amount you figured out, Karen saved in tuition dollars?
I believe it was $1.2 million last year. It was over a million dollars. So, it's a great chance. A lot of students are walking out of here as a second semester freshman and first semester sophomores. It's a great savings for the kids.
When you say they have to take it after their 10th grade year, you mean in the summer? Have they finished 10th grade and they can take it in the summer?
They're 11th graders, yes. There will be some changes. Some of the colleges are easing up with that. They are permitting 10th graders to take courses. We're looking to add possibly pre-calculus next year, which are mainly 10th graders, and a CAD III architectural class.
So, that age, that grade requirement's actually be driven by the universities, not by districts. Okay.
Mr. Captain, first of all, congratulations to you. This is excellent. You're the one that spearheaded all this.
Yeah, I've had a lot of help.
You've done, you know, but also, how many other high schools in the county do this? Do you know?
A lot of schools do offer classes, but not 22. I've been speaking to Norwin and Franklin Regional. They offer courses. And plus, we're doing, we're looking at something different here. We're actually opening up to other school districts so kids can take classes here. And basically, Penn Trafford will become like a hub for multiple colleges, so they'll come here for their additional credits.
Those prices here, on campus here, those are very reasonable. Very reasonable.
And these courses, when you look at the World Literature and Sociology, those do not count towards graduation. I gotta tell you, that's just additional classes. Students can get a jump on their college career.
When I see those private schools, they're $220. That's, that's unheard of.
Thank you.
This is something the high school appreciates every year when December comes and you have to approve the courses studies. You've actually approved us having 22 different courses. So, that is, it reflects back to the whole board as well, so I appreciate it. The last thing I have, Jen Haberberger's actually having a PT alumni in the Arts Day. Remember, she does this every other year, where she invites alumni from Penn Trac who are back who are employed in the art industry, and they come back and do like a career for students who are currently in the arts programs or who are looking forward to doing something in the arts. It's kind of like an art job fair, and it's great to bring our alumni back because a lot of them are very successful and talented, and it gives our kids an opportunity to see different career choices because they're interested in art. It helps them make future decisions down the road. And she's also invited anyone from school board who wants to stop in that day, as well as the administrators. It'd be nice if our elementary principals can come up as well. Some of their kids now that they're bigger, what they're doing as well. Very proud of our teachers, and all they do is to make this place great. At the end of this evening, Ms. Sarah's gonna do a building presentation to kind of go over what we're actually, there's been a lot of talk, but now that we have a building project, what is it? Well, they're gonna kind of answer some of those questions for us, for at least for the public. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. At this time, we will have recognition of visitors. We have one visitor, Mrs. Bradley.
Thank you. Is that a Bradley? 847 Harrison City Road in Level Green. And my question, I have one question. Frequently during the year, when Dr. Trey would come in and say we had an executive session to discuss personnel and potential litigation, my question is the word "potential." Is that referring to the litigations we've been in for the last, what, three years maybe, or is that a future litigation that we haven't been involved in? Just the word "potential." Okay. Okay, so it's a variation of the, it's not, it's not another person coming up with some idea?
Well, yeah, it is. It is possible. One is a possibility.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Does the end of visitors? Okay, may I have a motion to give approval to pay the list of bills for the month of December?
Motion by Mr. Petrusi. Second. Second by Mr. Noel. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Any old business?
None this evening, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Lego. We did have an executive session before tonight's meeting to discuss personnel, legal, and student issues. Okay, under new business, athletics and extracurricular, Dr. Koschko.
Thank you. Madam President.
Madam.
Thank you, Madam President. Moved to accept the following resignation. Mike William Head, Junior High Wrestling Coach, effective upon start date of June hires. Marty Korn, Ski Club co-sponsor. Jonathan Tazza, Assistant Track Coach. Jason Warzini, Assistant Boys Volleyball Coach.
Second. Second by Mr. Nemick. Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Moved to employ the following personnel. New employees contingent upon receipt of all the necessary documentation, acceptance of Act 3415114 waivers from Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days. Chuck Durst, Head, Junior High Wrestling Coach. Mike Ink, Assistant Junior High Wrestling Coach.
Second. Question.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Said we all, Madam President?
Thank you, Dr. Koschko.
Madam President, before you move on, maybe a question for Dr. Harris, sort of the solicitor. Volunteer coaches, not paid coaches, do those go through a board approval process? And if so, when do we usually do that?
They do. We all approve volunteers. They are required to have the same clearances and their files on the agenda. It just depends on when the AD has them down to us to put on. Because we don't get them all, we don't get them consistently.
Okay. Do we ever do anything retroactively as long as clearances have been turned into central administration, like a timing thing where, like, for instance, we're having a meeting now, our next meeting's in January. I know there's always kids that come back from college and want to volunteer with something different.
We have shied away from that.
Okay.
We've shied away from, if they don't have clearances on file, then, and they're approved, we haven't been using them.
Okay. I only asked that question, I had someone from the community call me. I was in that situation, and I guess the clearances came in today, and they were getting them to Mr. Hetrick, and...
I would check with Mr. Hetrick, for sure, but I'm pretty positive we've always held them until an official board meeting.
Okay.
And I defer to the solicitor to say if we, you know...
I agree with that. I don't, I mean, I don't really want us retroactive when clearances are involved. I just was surprised not to see it on here. That's all, why I'm asking. So, I'm not sure.
It must not have made it down to the office to come from the agenda.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Budget and finance, Mr. Katsasik.
Moved to approve the following expenditures for the high school renovation project according to the schedule. Access Architecture, $38,333.50. The Sarah Corporation, $22,500. Morris, Knowles &amp; Associates, $3,500.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nemick. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That is all, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Katsasik. Buildings and ground safety, Mr. Leonard.
Thank you, Madam President. I would first like to make a motion to terminate employee number 131401 during probationary period effective November 8, 2013.
Second. Second by Dr. Koschko.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
I'd like to now make a motion to authorize Access Architecture to prepare and submit the required variance request of a 20-year-old to the PDE for the Penn Trafford High School project.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nemick. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
I would like to also authorize Access Architecture to prepare and submit Plan Con Part D and E documents to the Department of Education for the Penn Trafford School Project, High School Project.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi.
I do have a question. Hank, you're out there. I see you. Once you fill this out and send it to the state, how long will it take to get this in their hands?
It'll have to take longer. It takes about, depending on the backlog, four to six weeks.
How long will it take you to fill out?
Oh, I will have it done in December here sometime, in May or two.
So, they should have it by sometime in January?
Yes.
Any update on Plan Con?
No, it's still the same status that I had mentioned a couple months ago. Excuse me? No change.
I think we have a question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Okay, I would also like to move toward contract to Garvin, Boward, Byco Engineering Incorporated for a geotechnical investigation for the renovation project of Penn Trafford High School. This has received proposals from these three companies, with Garvin, Boward being the lowest responsible bid at $13,643, and I'd like to also comment that that will cover all testing regarding any add options that we would have going in course of the potential project.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nemick. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Employee relations, negotiations, and transportation, Mr. Stovar.
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Stovar. Food service, Mr. Nemick, new vice president.
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Nemick. Personnel and curriculum, Mr. Petrusi.
Thank you, Madam President. Moved to approve this addition teaching and support personnel for the month of December 2013.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard. Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Moved to approve Penn Trac High School program studies for 2014-15.
Second. Question.
Question being called for.
Mr. Katsasik. Second.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Moved to the following retirement resignation. Mark Millavast, teacher at Harrison Park Elementary School, effective December 3, 2013.
Second. Question.
Second by Mr. Noel.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Moved to adopt 2014-15 school calendar recommended by the superintendent to make it on part official minutes. 2014-15 school year will begin with the service day on Monday, August 18, and will officially terminate June 30, 2015. Last demonstration will be Friday, May 22, 2015, unless it becomes necessary to extend the school calendar because of weather conditions, emergency, or other urgent reasons.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Moved to adopt the 2014-15 service employees calendar, makes it part of the official minutes calendar, with 247 working days and 14 paid holidays, makes the work here 261 days. Yearning employees will be paid the 261 days, including the paid holidays.
Second. Second by Mr. Katsasik. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Moved to approve the following professional, effective December 4, 2013. The new employees contingent upon receipt of all necessary documentation will extend Act 34151114 waivers from Pennsylvania within 30 days. Angie Pickston, Trapp Elementary.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That's all. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Moved to approve the following temporary professional employee, effective December 4, 2013, a teaching areas of her respective certification is signed by administration. Employing contingent upon receipt of a signed contract, no later than Friday, December 6, 2013, and subsequent receipt of all necessary certification documentation and acceptance of Act 34151114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Sarah Oliver, Level M, Step 2, salary $44,017.
Do we have a second?
Second. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Policy Public Relations Legislative Title II, Mr. Noel.
Moved to accept and file the minutes of superintendent's information committee meeting held on Monday, November 4, 2013.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard. Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Moved to appoint the following recreation board representatives. Penn Township Rep. Dr. Katsasik and Dr. Koschko, Trafford Borough Rep. Nick Petrusi and Penn Rep. Dr. Jatre.
Second by Dr. Koschko. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Moved to appoint the following as Penn Township Area Recreation Committee Representatives for PT. Mrs. Tony Yezing and Mr. Nick Petrusi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Moved to approve the following revised policies and administrative regulations as presented to the board. A copy of these policies and regulations will be made part of the official minutes as listed below.
Second.
Second by Mr. Katsasik. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Moved to tentatively approve the following policies as presented to the board, again as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Katsasik. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Madam President, if you can indulge in the board, indulge me. I'm gonna go back to when I asked that question about the coaches, and I'd like to put a motion on to approve of volunteer coaches with the condition that all clearances are turned in. I know we're kind of out of that section of the meeting. I don't know if we can go back to that, if I need to wait before adjournment, but I would like to do that. I hate to see a young person just gradually wants to put time back into the system and not be able to do that because of...
to do that because there's time in the board, knowing, of course, he won't be able to get into buildings or do anything with the tildos.
Why don't we do that at the end under new business?
Okay.
Under new business?
We're past athletics and curricula, but, you know, I didn't jump in then.
I need to do it at the end after the next motion.
Okay.
We'll make it the last motion.
Okay. In that case, for now, that's all I have.
What do we already have for volunteers?
This is for basketball to high school.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Mr.
Kind of obviously name and all that. Just wanted to make sure. Be okay with four.
Taxes, insurance, and census, Mr. Stovar.
Move to approve the resolution limiting any fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen tax increase to an amount no greater than the Pennsylvania Department of Education index. A copy of the resolution will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That's all I have tonight.
Okay. Solicitor's report. While she's not, Mr. Michael Brongo, she's a Ms. Shaw.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. A couple of months ago, the board asked the solicitor if they would, at board meetings, discuss a couple of cases to bring interesting issues to the board and to the public. So I was asked to address, one, that I thought was of interest, but, two, that's very up to date because decisions just came down this week on it. But the first one is the Rockaway case, and it focuses on special education and what happens when divorced, separated, or never parents, never married parents disagree about a plan for a child who has special needs. Procedural safeguards under IDEA are meant to ensure that parents are given meaningful opportunity to participate in their child's decision-making process regarding the placement of a child. And under the requirements of the federal law, you only need the consent of one parent. So oftentimes, school districts, when parents are separated or divorced or never married, they will work with the parent who agrees mostly with the school district. It's a lot easier. What we need to caution parents under the Rockaway case and caution school districts to be cognizant of the legal relationship of both parents to the child. So if one parent has sole legal custody, even though the child lives with the other parent physically most of the time, the parent with the sole legal custody has the right to make the decisions regarding the child. If they share legal custody, both parents have to agree to any kind of placement or changing placement in regard to special needs. And in the Rockaway case, the mother agreed to the plan, but the father disagreed, so the father went to due process. So it's something that you want to be aware of as a school district to make sure that you have the right legal documents, just not take a parent's say on who's living with which parent has the child what part of the time, and make sure that it's up to date because things change regarding child custody. So if you have a child custody agreement that's two years old, you want to make sure that it's up to date and you know who has the legal authority to sign on behalf of the child, which may be one for both parents. Then the other thing of interest, I think, to educators and to the board is the issue of releasing home addresses of educators. I think that's been issued for a while under right to know. The old case from two thousand and five, the Roland case, said that took the position, the Commonwealth Court took the position that home addresses of schoolteachers, educators, were not to be released, and that was the law. Then, subsequent to that, there were a flurry of requests a couple of years ago to school districts all across the state for right-to-know requests for home, the home addresses of their educators. And the matter went to Commonwealth Court, and the Commonwealth Court was presented with a petition from PISERS, which is the union for educators, asking to intervene in the matter because the right-to-know law, the parties are the requister and the agency. So they didn't allow PISERS to intervene. The Commonwealth Court said, well, that's the law. But they issued a stay so that no addresses would be released, and the matter went to the Supreme Court. In August of two thousand and twelve, a year and a half ago, the Supreme Court said, wait a minute, it's not fair because the teachers need to have, in this case, the home addresses, have the ability to go in and make their arguments as to why they shouldn't have their home addresses revealed. So the stay was continued, and the Supreme Court sent it back to the Commonwealth Court. Up to date, a year and a half later, on Thursday, there'll be a hearing and argument before the Commonwealth Court dealing with that issue. PISERS will go in and make their argument that under their statute, there is a confidentiality clause that says that all data can be gathered, maintained, and stored by, by PISERS, by the retirement system, and they have to be cognizant and maintain confidentiality. So under that section of their statute, of the PISERS statute, home addresses cannot be released. Well, then another thing happened. Another group called the Pennsylvanians for Uniform, Pennsylvanian Union Reform, Pennsylvanians for Union Reform filed two right-to-know requests in September, one to SIRS, which is the State Employment Retirement System, and one to PISERS, for all the home addresses of any active, vested, retired, annuance, anyone in the system. So SIRS and educators wouldn't be part of that unless they had worked previously for the Commonwealth and contributed, and then now worked as an educator and are now contributing for PISERS. They would have dual pension rights. So SIRS issued, gave some information and denied others, and the Pennsylvanians for Union Reform appealed to the Office of Open Records in October. PISERS denied in part and granted in part. They gave the names of their retirees and their annuants and their vested people, but they refused to give the home addresses based on the statutory authority that I just mentioned about the confidentiality of data that they kept. And just on Monday, the Office of Open Records supported PISERS and said that they were upholding the law because the Commonwealth Court had continuously said PISERS has the right on statutory right to maintain confidentiality of home addresses. The loser in this case, Pennsylvanians for Union Reform, will probably appeal that to the Commonwealth Court, and will wait the decision of SIRS, and that'll go to Commonwealth Court. But on Thursday, PISERS will make their arguments again to the Commonwealth Court on this issue. So the matter's not resolved yet, but the good news is the Supreme Court's stay is in effect and remains in effect. And if you go on the Office of Open Records webpage, you'll see in bright red letters at the top, home addresses of educators shall not be released pending further notice of the court. So I mean, that's always of interest to educators, and I thought I would just bring up to date since it was fresh news this week.
Thank you.
Shaw, when you talk to the previous case with the parents and the custody agreements, where does the responsibility for updated custody agreements lie? With the district?
With the district.
So the district is responsible?
The district's responsible because the district has to use that information in order to make decisions for the child. It would be nice if it was the parent, but the parent doesn't get in trouble. The school district is the one that's called to task if they have missed that issue and have accepted a consent from a parent who doesn't have any legal authority to do so.
Is there a mechanism in place within the system that when changes occur to those agreements, the district's notified, or do they just have to just roll through the files constantly and make sure they're updated and accurate?
I think what school districts generally do and what we recommend is that when you're dealing with the issue, for example, under child fine for special education, you would ask the parents for the updated information. And you ask both parents to try to get, maybe you'll get the same answer. And you ask for a certified court order because they have to go to the courthouse and get it certified, and if it's not the right one or the current one, then they're not going to get certification on that. Again, you know, if an IEP meeting comes up and you know the child's tramp, lives with dad now, previously with mom, maybe mom still has legal custody even though dad's, you know, has the child all the time. So you need, you know, the educators and special ed directors, I think, are.
That's a heavy burden to bear for districts who don't have access to the information.
I think the special ed directors are usually pretty well apprised of those issues.
How do you, how do you say audit that?
We go through the building principles whenever the issue does arise. If there's questions, they'll have what's on file, and then if there's not, then we'll ask them to bring up their company.
Mr. Stovar, what happens normally is in the beginning of the year, they're given an emergency care card, and the parents have to fill that out, and they, it always says on there, custody agreement, and the parents have to check off yes or no, and then underneath it said if there's custody agreement, please attach copies of court agreements. And they are, so we get updated every year. They are to update us. If there's a change in that, that doesn't always happen through the communication between the special ed teacher and the parents because there's a lot of communication that does happen. I'm sure it brings up a good point about something falling through the cracks or something we'd have to look at. At least once a year, that information is requested at the beginning of the school year.
How many of those get turned in? Every one passed? Or they're about to stay or?
Yeah. Every student has to turn an emergency care card. Rarely do you have if there is a custody agreement where it's not given to us.
And I will say in practical matters, if one parent knows that the other parent doesn't have legal custody, they'll make sure the school knows that because they won't want that parent to have any information about the child. So it kind of works out, it kind of works itself out. But really, special education areas are the most important to make sure we have the right parent signing the documents for auditing purposes.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. PTA representative, Mr. Reineer.
Thank you, Madam President. A quick financial question. Last month, we decided to borrow ten million, am I correct? With the possibility of borrowing more in January and later this year. My question to that is, wouldn't it be prudent to just wait until next election year, see if this governor can be voted out, at which point, I'm assuming that whoever beats him will be a lot friendlier to public education, maybe bring back Plan Con and all that good stuff. And if he wins reelection, we'll be in the same shape anyway. Just a thought. I mean, my personal opinion is the PSBA should get behind whoever's running against him in May, whenever that's shaken out. But I think if the PSBA would get behind his challenger, I don't see that he would have a chance of winning. And I don't see that Corbett does a whole lot for public education in any facet. So just a thought, maybe to hold off on borrowing anymore until next year, which case the, if there's a new person in there, there might be many more positives.
We had that discussion back in the November meeting. I don't know if you were there for that one. And that was certainly discussed, but it did, you know, the majority of the board wanted to move forward at this time. For example, when we go to borrow the next ten million.
Right.
We could hold that discussion again.
If I may, one of our overriding concerns is the very, very good bond rates that we want to take advantage of. It would be, and they are, I don't know how they are this week, but they've been probably bonds around. I mean, that's the first thing.
He's, we're actually going to market tomorrow, so he's going to give me a call tomorrow morning and let me know where the rates are. They're, they're pretty much where they were when he was the last out here, but we'll get the official word tomorrow when he goes to the market.
We were able to take advantage of first the bond issue of some almost unprecedented low bond rates, and that equates to a lot of, a lot of money.
What would the Plan Con pay for if it was thirty percent?
Thirty percent.
Thirty percent.
If it was still in effect. And also just to also too, Shaw, that money would roll into our fund balance. And if the state saw the fund balance increase substantially, if you realize that, they said, what's Pen Trafford crying about? You got this huge fund balance. They don't care about the condition of the building. That's, that's not significant to them. That's why the best we rolled over now. And of course, I voted not to because I belong with our business manager because he's concerned about the big PISERS business we have coming up. So, but that's, you know, they get in the past, you know, so once a pass, you go on the majority of the board. But just so you remember, they look at your fund balance, they do audit every year. And if they see that it's pretty high, you know, then.
I look at that, too.
Well, yeah, I'm sure you do.
And if you're following our motions tonight, we're doing everything we can to keep in lockstep with every move we can to be in line should the money become available from the state for the Plan Con. We were in line, we're making a motion, we made a couple motions tonight, so we're hoping to be positioned properly, take advantage of that should it become available, regardless of who the governor may have made offer.
And the Plan Con as of now is, it's out?
It's still.
Was the chance that's?
Okay.
Well, Hank, did you want to add something to this?
Yeah, to clarify a little bit, you've positioned yourself. We got in under the deadline last year and submitted Plan Con Part A and got approval. So you were in the pipeline for Plan Con, and that, and the motions you made tonight continue that process. So whether you borrow money now or later or whenever, whether the current governor does something about it, whether a new governor is voted in and does something about it, you are already in line and moving forward to receive any reimbursement if it should become available. So you've done everything you need to do to justify or to ensure that if money becomes available, you will be eligible for it.
About what, about a hundred and sixty? Hundred and seventy? But, but the Plan Con is being level funded. It's still, it's still being processed, but it's just a long.
Have any other districts been approved for Plan Con and actually got money back?
They are not. Right now, there is a hold on Plan Con Part A approvals, which is where the, where the financing comes through, and they start paying back out. And that has been put on hold until Plan Con became solvent again. And as of, what I'm being told is as of the end of this year, the, and that happened with, with an accounting method on how they counted Plan Con being solvent. The new administration used a different method for counting solvency, and it took several years to catch up to what they've already committed to. And I'm being told at the end of this year, they will be back into the black, and there is the possibility that they will start approving as, because it's level funded. But we won't know that until it happens.
But if I understand properly, there are still projects being funded, just not new projects being funded. There's still projects building, being built.
Current projects, including, including your projects, you're still receiving money from the state. They didn't, they didn't retroactively cancel Plan Con and renege on, on previous projects. They're, they're funding through the projects, and as projects get to the end of their twenty years, and that, that money falls off, it gets rolled back into the general Plan Con fund, and the theory is that new projects can start getting age approval. But it hasn't happened yet.
Thank you.
At this.
Yep. Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to approve Tyler Magory as a volunteer high school boys basketball coach contingent upon receipt of Act thirty-four-one-fifty-one, one-fourteen waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Second.
I have a question.
Yep.
Do you know, does he have any of those current clearances?
My understanding is they're all done. He was, my understanding is he's at school. His father was actually meeting with Mr. Hetrick this afternoon. Dad sent in the wrong piece of paper, which delayed the process. So dad called me, and I know the family, I know the kid, but my understanding is he has all of them.
All three of them.
This is a timing thing. Had our meeting been on December tenth instead of third, would have been a non-issue.
So you understand he has all three of them placed, so I just bring them to school?
Exactly.
That was a second by Mr. Kassic.
Question.
Okay. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
I thank the board and Madam President's indulgence on that issue.
All right. At this time, we are going to have the presentation by Masero.
Thank you very much. I'm going to pass out. You should already have this information. I was under the impression that Dr. Harris emailed this to everybody on the board based prior to Thanksgiving. This is our financial executive summary. For the high school project, we're just going to go through the overall project budget, hard and soft costs, and answer any questions that you might have if you would like to.
Are they? Oh, no, they, they only have the game.
So now that we have all the documents here, the first thing that I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank Mr. Leonard and Mr. Nemec, as well as Dr. Harris and Mr. Anglace, Hank, and people I work with at Masero. Put in a lot of time as a team the last couple of weeks going through both the hard and soft costs that come through tonight. First off, all of our projects, all construction projects are comprised of two costs, there's a soft cost, and those are the costs that would be like Mike's fee, Hank's fee, the fee that you approved tonight for the geotechnical report. Those are fees that are related to having to do the project money that you have to spend in order to execute projects. The hard costs are what we call the state's bricks. That's the labor, material. That's the labor, material, subcontractors, anything that's expended in the actual building, the actual bricks and sticks in the building. So right now, we have a soft cost budget of about one point, I'm sorry, about $5.1 million. This would be represented on this first page, it's all the green and maize color. We've gone through each of these line items with great detail, and if we find them pretty well, we will be able to put in the new fee for the testing. And we're currently working with the school district to make a relatively detailed estimate for your fixtures, furniture, equipment line item, which is about a $785,000 line item. That would include anything, that would be in the classrooms, projector, projection screens, projectors, smart boards, loose furniture, computers, things of that nature. So we're trying to get some further clarification on that. The owner's contingency for construction, which is the line item right above that, which is right now 5%, is a $1.3 million allowance that we're recommending the school district carry, which would pay for unforeseen conditions during the construction phase. We'll talk about another contingency in a couple of minutes, but this is strictly if we open up a wall and find something that we didn't know that was there that we have to deal with, and it wasn't included in the contract documents, and we have to spend some dollars to make that problem go away. This is your bucket of money in order to pay for that, those things. As we get through the construction and your risk is lowered, you may want to consider doing other things with those dollars, but for right now, we're just carrying a 5% of the construction costs for those unforeseen conditions. Couple other things that we're happy to announce, Hank and Scott were able to find adequate space within the building so we don't have to invest $200,000 in temporary trailers and have them out on the campus. We are going to invest probably in the neighborhood of $30,000 to $50,000 to create some classrooms and then rip them down, but that's a huge savings, that we can establish these temporary classrooms, you'll be able to run for the whole duration of the project, and as we shift departments around, they'll just become the new space. So that was a big win. I'm happy to be able to pocket, or you guys pocket $150,000 on that. Moving on to the hard costs, we have to break this down into new and renovation dollars because that's the way we have to submit it to Hank so that he can submit it to the state Plan Con. But right now, we're at about $26.8 million on the construction. That includes all the renovations, as we discussed, with a list of alternates. I believe there are 12 alternates, everything from the school annex to the new roofing system and things like that. Within this hard cost budget, there is a 10% design contingency. And that design contingency will be whittled down as we get closer to the bid day. And that design contingency, say, for example, as Hank is meeting with Scott and the teachers, and they decide that they need to have a few hoods in the new STEM classroom, and we didn't know about that, this is a new development, dollars from that contingency will then be pulled out of the contingency into the estimate in order to compensate for the fact that we didn't know that the first time we did the estimate. As we get closer to bid day, that number will shrink to 2% or 3%, maybe even 1%. And we are also carrying a slight escalation number to the midpoint of construction, but again, as we get closer to bid day, we get closer to the midpoint of construction, and so that number also reduces. So we're very happy, we're very confident in this number. We've worked very hard with the team, there's still some things that we're trying to bang out with regard to your FFNE budget, but I think that we have sufficient dollars in the budget to cover that stuff. The other thing that was a big win and a big accomplishment since the last time we met was we sat down and we did a phasing plan. We sat down with the administration, the architect, a bunch of people, teachers that were involved in the project, and we made a big timeline, and we have a color-coded map of the four plans, and we have determined, at least at this early stage, that we're going to have a nine-phase construction project. Capitalizing as much as we can on the three summers that we have available to us between the start of construction and the actual occupancy of the building, and with the idea of trying to move entire departments each three months so that we go in, we'll do the work, well, actually, we'll go in, we'll displace a department, we'll do the work, and then they can move back. It's going to hopefully be a very controlled and a very well-thought-out process. This is only our first pass. We have it on paper, we have a lot of buy-in, we had a lot of people in that room working on it, and I think we just right now have to let it sit for a while, and we go and come back and visit it again as the drawings become a little bit more clear in this next round of design. But it was a very good meeting, and I think it's a great plan. I really like the idea of moving by department, so it should limit impact on all the other departments, it should be a fairly well-thought-out process. So that being said, if anybody has any questions?
Couple of quick questions. Maybe I was not paying enough attention, but for geotechnical investigation required only for additions, you have nothing plugged in there. And we approved-
You would approve somebody for that, yeah?
We did it tonight.
Right.
We just did.
So we'll have to add that in there.
Plug in about $14,000 in outline. And I'm looking here, and I'm maybe one of the slower members of the board, you said there's a 10% contingency. I see 5% owner's contingency for construction, and you talked about adding the 5% architectural engineering building inside the top in red.
No, the 10% is included in the sticks and bricks overall.
So it isn't shown as a line item, but it's in there.
It's in there. If you go to the heavy detail or the overall detail summary page of the new and reno that you should have received with our 80-page estimate, you'll see it as a line item across the block.
I have that in there.
I have it over here. You want me to show it to you?
I have it.
Okay.
If it's the one that-
It's the one you should have got right before Thanksgiving.
Yes, I have that. Thank you.
Thank you. The other thing that we did, just real quickly, is we went through all the qualifications and assumptions with the administration and Hank and ourselves, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, that we know exactly what's going in the project, and the high school principal, and the administration knows exactly what we included and what is going to be. That's why we got to this FFNE discussion of what's this bucket of money going to pay for. So we've had some really good conversations.
Based on where we've been in timing versus where we are now, when you see the first shovel in the ground?
We're really hoping to have guys sitting in their trucks waiting for the yellow buses to leave on June 13th or something like that.
Right.
You mean the first wall ripped out?
I was going to say, we're the first sledgehammer to a wall, right?
We're going to have, probably while the students are here, we will probably have the main contractors setting up. We also did a psych logistics plan. They're going to be setting up a little temporary trailer park, if you will, over up behind the baseball field, over to the right of the school. They'll be putting up temporary fence, they'll be putting down a lot of stone, 86 or 7 trailers. So all that work will be being done, getting temporary power, internet connections, all that stuff set up so that when the kids leave, we'll be able to rock on.
Thank you.
Sorry, sir?
Dan, when are the bids going to be announced? Or are they advertised?
I believe we will have a five-week bidding period with the bids being received in late April so that the board can approve them in May. So we have two weeks to issue contracts and have people ready to go by, like, June 3rd or 4th or something.
Will they be broken down, will it be, is one general project broken down into plumbing camp?
Yeah, it'll be at least four, if not five, private contracts. The state separations act of 1913, the main basis, you have that for. General trades, plumbing and fire protection, HVAC, your mechanical, and then electric.
If you're a large enough construction firm, you have all those under your umbrella?
Unless you submit to the state for a waiver, for a variance on the separations act, it doesn't matter. When we did Bethel Park, it was 80 million, we had nine private contracts. So right now, we still have to talk to Hank and finalize what the exact bid packages are. We might have a food service bid package.
All right.
You know, so it might be five, six. We're not going to do 27 bid packages that have four, glue and prime.
Who's on that list, by the way? How do you know?
Anybody that can bond the work can submit a bid. Yeah, it's just about everybody. We have a list of about 1,100 local subcontractors that we communicate with through our online plan room. They'll start getting notifications in the spring so that they get it on their calendar so that we can start reserving space in the estimators.
Dan, do we, I'm making a question for Fred as well. Is it low bid has to be taken? Or can those, okay, so the theory is you don't get bonded unless you've proven you have the capability to complete and execute that work. So that's the safeguarded building process is be able to bond it.
I don't know that that's actually true.
Well, that's a theory.
If you have enough, if you have the cash to be bonded, boy, you are then qualified.
Okay. So as you, as an construction manager and Hank is architect, do you, I mean, obviously, you don't just put that out and say, "Everything." You have people you know can execute this work that are going to be in the bid package.
It does influence the bidding.
Right. It's a little scary to me.
I have pickup trucks with a magnet.
Yeah. That's what scares me, because the lower bid you have is taken, that's it.
The one thing that we do do is, before we come to the board and make recommendations, we will sit down with the bidder and go through the bids and say, "Do you have all this? Do you have all that?" Because it is plans and specs. If we can prove, and we always can, because we use an electronic form of communication, that you have all the agenda, you have all of this, you have all of that, sometimes, you know, someone might say, "I made a mathematical error," or whatever. They only have like 24 hours to pull their number.
Okay.
So, but we do run them through as hard as a mill process to make sure that we have a comfortable bid.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
And you said about security fence. The building's going to maintain, be able to be secure all during the whole course of project, right? Lock, ready, intact. But all you're going to secure with the security fence? The security fence is going to be around the trailer compound? Just the construction trailers. Right. Actually, the biggest concern that we have is that as we shut down portions of the school, we're going to have to take a real hard look at the egress issues to make sure that we'll be talking to the fire marshal a lot because there are really strict rules about how far you can be away from a means of getting out of the building. And another guy, he's a good guy, come on out here.
And if any of the alternates that are building additions are taken, there will be construction fence around those.
Oh, yeah. If any of the new construction happens.
Yeah, I've seen projects-
That's a good point, Hank. Thanks.
-where the entire area's concomitant off the fence. I don't think that's necessary after I was asked.
Or your building's going to be occupied, so if you give them hope to do it.
Yeah. Anybody else? Well, thanks very much. If you have any questions or if anybody, I know that was a document that we sent out. If anybody wants to come to our office or meet us here, we'd be happy to go through it page by page, what you had explained. So, thanks again.
Thank you.
Any other business to port aboard?
All we spoke right away was one question.
All right. So I have a motion for adjournment.